Great, let's start the meeting for October 27th. And I think we should do roll call now. You want to do it Curtis?
Minarbi, Young.
Here.
Kachak. Johnson. Johnson, absent. Menina. Absent. Oh, online?
Yes.
Okay. Lee. Quadri.
Yes, online.
Robadi. Absent. Salas. Aldana.
Present.
Pope. And Erickson. Okay, chair, you have four.
All right, fire department. Do you have anyone here? You come? All right. Thank you so much for showing up tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is firefighter one, Braden Burnett. I'm with McCalli Fire Station Third Watch. The statistics for September 2025. We had zero structure or wildland fires. We had six nuisance fires. Three cooking fires and five activated alarms. For emergencies, we had a hundred and four medical emergencies. One motor vehicle collision with pedestrian. Four motor vehicle crash slash collision. And then zero mountain rescues, ocean rescues, and hazardous materials incidents. Our fire safety tips and announcements for this one is seasonal decorations. With the holiday season just around the corner, consider fire resistant, non combustible decorations. Choose only underwriters, laboratory approved electrical decorations, and follow manufacturer's instructions for insulation and load. Some other tips, use lights that are in good repair. Always turn off lights before leaving your home or going to bed. Do not overload power strips, surge protectors, or extension cords. And never leave candles unattended. Secure lighters that matches outer reach from children. Any questions?
All right, does the board who is here in person have any questions? Or online? I don't see anyone. Are there any community members with any questions? All right. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Oh, sorry, I have one more thing. Last month, we had asked about the situation with the water and if the if water gets dumped into the park after it's done getting used. Do you know if you have an answer for that?
CRO didn't get back to us yet. I believe they're still investigating. Hopefully, we'll have that next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have maybe HPD?
Yes, hello, hi.
Hi, thanks for coming. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sergeant Daniel Cunningham for District One HPD. This month's stats for motor vehicle thefts. We are up four, sorry, up one from last month, so from four to three. Burglaries are still the same at one. All types of thefts have gone down. Last month was ten, this month is seven. Vehicle break-ins are up one from one last month to four this month. Assaults are down from three last month to zero this month. Sex assaults are down from two last month to zero this month. Graffiti cases are at zero. And drug arrests went from zero last month to two this month. Calls for service went down a little from four hundred and five last month to three hundred and ninety-seven this month. Last board was asking for motor vehicle accidents statistics, so from July to October. From it is District One side of this board meeting, we had three total major vehicle accidents. Two of them were critical. And they had the one fatal accident on the freeway. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for coming. I was wondering if you could tell us, I know that speed cameras have become operational, and I was wondering if you could share what intersections that are in your district will have those?
Yes, the speed cameras are operational, and I do not have which cameras in my sector, the B-178 will actually have the cameras. I believe most of them unfortunately are in District Seven.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions here for the board that they have for the police? Or online? Okay. Community members? All right. Are you able to stick around for when we talk about homelessness later this meeting?
Sure.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you very much. I think it'll be probably in about twenty minutes from now.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
District Seven?
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura, I'm representing District Seven, East Honolulu. The following are the statistics for the month. Motor vehicle theft, eight. Burglary, seven. Theft, twenty. UEMV or car break-ins were five. And we have total calls for service in our district at five thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. The safety tip for the month, as Halloween will be on Friday, we have some Halloween safety tips. So please have costumes that are bright and reflective, that are easy to see. A parent or responsible adult should be with all trick or treaters. Everyone should have a flashlight, so during darkness, they can be easily seen and they can see what is in their surroundings. Please remain on the street and sidewalks that are well lit. And all treats should be checked before they are eaten by an adult. If any children have their treats, it should be checked prior to them consuming it. But that's our report for the month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you know anything about the cameras in this district?
No, I haven't, but I'll note it down. Let's see what information I can have for you next month.
Okay, it'd be helpful to know the intersections that these will be at.
Okay.
And are they active right now, or are they going to be active in the first of November?
You know, I haven't heard any, I haven't had any update on the speed cameras. So I am not sure if they're operational.
Okay.
And their locations, but I'll try and find out for you, and hopefully I can have that for you next month.
Thank you very much. All right.
Yeah, I have a question for either of the HPD representatives. For the stats that you present, are those available online anywhere for if someone wasn't at the meeting, or if they wanted to look at like year over year stats or anything like that? Is that data available to the public?
Yes, that available is available on our website, HonoluluPD.org, as well as other types of information as well regarding your neighborhood and around the island.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for people here? Or online? Okay. Would you also be able to stick around a bit for when we talk about homelessness in about twenty minutes or so?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. All right, we are going to talk about some brief board business. We have one vacant at large seat. I have not been contacted regarding anyone interested in the seat. Curtis, did you say you had been? All right, is there anyone here who would like to put themselves forward as being interested in being on this board right now? All right, for everyone who's on the board, if there's any person that you would like to see join our board, it'd be great if they could join our board in November, since we will not be having another meeting until the end of January. All right. Board of Water Supply. Hey, Steve.
Hi, good evening. Steve in Northstrom from the Board of Water. Hi, and for the month of September, we did have two main breaks in the district. One on September 11th, it was an eight inch break at 2131 South Baritania Street. We had another break on the 12th. This one was at 1711 Citron Street, and that was an eight inch main break. And our announcement, again, just like last month, we really want to push that water conservation push by about twenty percent. As you know, lower than normal rainfall, high water demand could impact our water supply. Things like turning off the tap while brushing your teeth, shorter showers, by cutting it by a few minutes, using a garden nozzle on your hose and irrigating early in the morning to reduce evaporation, just some tips to be more mindful of our precious water resources. And you can get more tips on our website at BoardOfWaterSupply.com. And that's the announcement.
All right, questions for Board of Water Supply from this board? All right. I have not seen any questions. I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to Department of Parks and Rec presentation. Tara, thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. All right. Curtis, are you able to put up the slideshow? No problem. Thank you.
So we're going to talk about the Alawai Community Park, Alawai Neighborhood Park.
Can you pull the microphone down a little bit?
Is that better? Okay. So we're going to just go briefly over Alawai Community and Neighborhood Parks. If you, next slide.
Do you mind briefly saying what your responsibility, what you do for Parks and Rec?
Sorry, yeah. My name is I'm the East Honolulu District Manager, so I oversee the parks in East Honolulu from McCalli to Hawaikai. Okay, so the irrigation systems for Alawai Neighborhood Park and there is different types of systems, so it's kind of hard to see on this map, but it's so if you look at Alawai Community Park, we have a weather track system, which is an automatic system that we can control via computer or an app on our phone. And then if you move over towards Alawai Neighborhood Park, it's we have half is an automatic irrigation system, and then half is a quick coupler, which is a manual system. And then there's two other, the two softball fields at Alawai Neighborhood are also automatic systems. So I know it's a little bit confusing, but sometimes when our grass is dying, it's all separate systems. So it's hard to monitor and maintain all of it since it's operating individually and independently. Is that right? Okay. This is Johnny Raituta. He's our plumbing supervisor with the Maintenance Support Services with the Department of Parks and Recreation. So we just took some pictures. Johnny's irrigation crew was out at the two Alawai Parks for about two weeks. So they did do pretty extensive repairs to the irrigation system. It included fixing the sprinkler heads, adjusting how they were rotating. And then there was a water line break as well, an irrigation water line break. We also had some systems that just weren't working. So our weather track system, that's the automatic one, they couldn't get it to operate correctly. So we did have to contact the consultant, and they came out and they helped us fix it. Johnny guys also changed some of the timers, some of our timers weren't working. So that's all completed. So we just have some pictures for you guys to show you what the fields look like today. This was all taken probably last Thursday. I think I went out. So this is the first field at Alawai Community Park. That's the baseball field slash soccer field. So that's currently what it looks like now. And then next is the softball field. And then these are the bathrooms. So there was a makeover done on the restrooms back there earlier this year. So they redid the flooring, they replaced all the fixtures, they put up new partitions in between the stalls, so that's what it looks like now. And then this is the Alawai Promenade, so they were able to fix a majority of the irrigation that's on the promenade as well. And then some of the benches were replaced, or they were repaired. So this is the play apparatus at Community Park, and then the exercise equipment. And then we have Alawai Neighborhood Park softball field, so that's the current condition right now. And this is the last softball park at Neighborhood Park. So this is the one that Yalani helps us maintain as well. Then we have our dog park. And the community gardens. And then this is Alawai Neighborhood Park Comfort Station. So for the flooring of the comfort station at Neighborhood, we're looking into trying to do a contract.
We can probably try and see if we can do it in-house, but we have to we have to try and see if we can do it in-house, but the problem is, I guess, the people who use it sometimes they have to be mindful of when we do renovations, because they make all of our hard work look like rubbish. So, you know, in this case, we just renovated this in like, probably like last year. And it's already trashed already. And it is a highly used park, and a lot of the infrastructure is old. So that's the one thing that we got to keep in mind, especially with irrigation. That's why part of the park looks nice and green, and the other part looks not as green. So we are looking into different alternatives and different funding to try and see how we can make the park better, but that's still in the developing stages. So I'm doing shutdown during those dates. And see if we can revitalize the grass. You know, one of the things about the turf is
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more?
One of the things about the turf is we have to let the field rest. You know, without the rest, the grass is not going to be as green. And we're going to try and see if we can, you know, get it better for the community to use. Especially for the kids, right, the kakis, so they can fall on the grass and not fall on like dirt and rocks. So that is our goal. So moving forward, it's got to be patient. And when you see our signs up saying that the field is being, you know, worked on, if people can cooperate and help us through this time, then we can come up with a better, better field.
So the field is going to be closed, so Alawai Community Park and Neighborhood Park fields will be closed from December 18th through January 31st. During that time, they're going to be aerating the field, fertilizing, we'll be doing field leveling, extra watering, and any irrigation repairs and adjustment to the sprinkler heads.
Great. Thank you guys for coming. Thanks for the pictures. I think we'll have some questions now. If you both want to just stay around here, does anyone on the board have any questions here in person? Drew?
I have more of a comment. The softball field that's directly behind Marco Polo, I just wanted to let you guys know that there's must be a couple volunteers. I see them out there every morning working on it, and I really appreciate their work. They keep that field in pretty good condition.
Danielle?
Yes, thank you. Is the whole Community Park being closed from December 18th to January 31st? The whole park?
No, just the fields. So just the softball field and the baseball field. That's what we're going to be renovating.
Thank you very much.
Do you mind, Curtis, if we go back to the slideshow? I just had a question about maybe you could go to the one with the tennis court, that right here, with the comfort station. So as you guys know, a lot of the park has these areas where there's the brown patches and grass. Is the goal, I guess, of that six weeks closure to fill that in with completely with grass and to take some of these areas where there's a lot of dirt? There was also another picture I was just going to pull up. When the Alawai Neighborhood softball field, this one here. One more. Right there. Sorry, go between that. Those areas too, along the path that are also really, to me, it looks eroded. Is the goal again to fill that up with grass as well, all the way there?
Within the short time that we have, I don't think we can try, but there's no guarantee that the grass will take. Because realistically, I mean, in order to really, you would have to bring in sod. And then I this project doesn't have that kind of funding to do that, so we can try and, you know, lay down grass seeds and see what happens, see what takes. And if people, again, if people don't walk on it, and, you know, we do all of our repairs, the hope is for it to grow. But the more people can stay off of it to let it grow, then it can, then it can, it won't be dirt.
When you guys say the park will be closed, what type of physical barriers will you put up to close the park?
So there's typically just signs that's going to say field closed for maintenance. Yeah, so they'll probably be all over.
Is it possible to use anything more? I mean, I would love to see the work really come to fruition, and I've seen, I don't know, it's here in other cities where they like put plastic fencing or something that physically restricts people from being on there.
We can look into doing something like that.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right, any other questions for people? Okay, go ahead.
Just one quick question. So for the grass renovation, does that include also the area where it's usually soccer? It looks like soccer is played there a lot, and so it's empty, but it's on the other side of the softball.
Yeah, so it'll be that first field at Alawai Community, yes. So we're going to renovate that soccer portion as well as the baseball portion.
Then there. Go ahead, Danielle.
Just wanted to make sure that there is an area where children will still be able to play, a grassy area where children will be able to play during this time.
So it's just going to be the field. So the other grass areas, like by the playgrounds and some of the other areas, that's going to remain open.
The playground, and then after the fenced playground, there is still some green area. What about that green area?
It's really only going to be the fields. So it's going to be the four fields that are going to close for maintenance. Everything else will stay open.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any board members online that wanted to ask a question? Go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah, I want just to comment, yeah, great to see those benches along the promenade. Are they going to be adding anymore? It's total of three right now.
We don't have any plans to add more. Did you guys want more?
No, I mean, it looks nice. I see, because I walk it every day, and I see people, you know, relaxing and just sitting on the benches, which is great. I mean, are they going to put some closer to like the soccer and maybe the baseball field?
Well, we can look into adding more benches.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I was so happy when I saw the benches go up, so thank you for putting the benches up, and I would love benches everywhere, because they're great, and we have a beautiful view. All right, if you are here in person, can you make and then introduce yourself and ask your question?
Hi, Laura Ravine, neighbor. First of all, I want to commend your maintenance crew, who does a great job. They use their trucks and go up and down the bike path and pick up things. I don't know, I don't know who is picking up the trash bags, but they're all at the corner of Hiva and University. They're all neatly packaged. However, this morning, before it was light, about five o'clock, there was some man yelling and trying to take cans out of the bags. Many he'll rip the bags apart to get money. Okay, very easy solution. Just put some trash cans in that say recycling only. Let him take it out of the recycle.
Yeah, just push it up a little bit.
Let him take it out of the recycle bin and go off his way and get his recycle. Such an easy fix for something. And also, I don't know if it's the maintenance people are doing it, but are bringing all the trash bags right up to the corner where they can be picked up with a big truck. That's excellent. We have Pacific Islanders, and maybe there's a hundred or two hundred of them any one weekend, and they're great. We really enjoy them. I think they're doing a great job. I hope that you don't have any questions with them. We certainly don't in our area of the park, so I think it's, I think they're doing good. What I do have a concern about is the proposed unfortunate bridge thing that's going in there, which will bisect the park, bisect the bicycle path, because nobody's going to want to go up and down and gathering around everything. And it will break up the Pacific Islanders
Thirty seconds, Laura.
And we really don't want that to happen. It's the moving of the mature trees, which I watch grow from little kaki trees, is going to be absolutely devastating, because it'll be a dry area. And third of all, Karen, who couldn't come tonight, she and I and everybody else wants the small bridge put back in between the baseball and softball fields. It was such an easy way. Remember, we have the Makuli League, and they have bring their heavy bags of tool
Time.
and go crosswise, too. So we really need to make sure that there's an easy conveyance for them to play. Thank you.
Do you guys want to respond to that?
So the bridge is actually under Department of Transportation Services. So I think they were taking comments on that, so you might want to reach out to them. Yeah.
Does this include the pedestrian bridge between the two parks?
So that one actually, it's a structural issue. So we actually need to get it onto our capital improvement project list. Yeah.
All right. Angie, you to come?
So, I'm Angie. I'm representative from the Seven Aside Soccer. Sorry, put it up. I'm from Seven Aside Soccer. I'm one of the players who plays in the older soccer league on the tiny little field. So there's a big soccer field, and then the baseball, and then we're the tiny little one that's just marked with white marking. So I super appreciate you guys. Sounds like you've taken our needs and run with it, so I super appreciate that. I I came here to kind of express our needs, but it sounds like they've heard it and they're working on it, so I love it. And I'll pass it on to my league. I guess my questions, outstanding questions are, we've kind of had to piece around who to reach out to and for our needs, because our field is like very dusty. It's got a lot of holes, and I know you've heard that already, so that's why they're fixing it. But we didn't know who to reach out to, so it sounds like you're, you know, well in charge of this. Can we reach out to you, or yeah, best to reach out to you? Okay, wonderful. So I'll make sure we do that. And then my other concern with this park is the lighting. Yeah, I come at night, you know, we play at 6:30 and 7:30, and I find it really dark and a little bit dangerous for a single person just walking to and from my car. I'm always on the phone with my husband. He's like, call me when you get out of your car and call me when you go back. So that's just something to bring to the board's attention and the park's attention, that I think it should be a little bit more well lit and safer for us walking to and from our
Do you specify the areas that you would like to add, see more lighting in?
In the parking lot, I guess. We do find, I know that there's not, yeah, when I'm walking to and from my car, from my soccer games, I feel unsafe because of the lighting, especially the further distance parking lot. But, yeah, I guess the closer one is more well lit, but the further one is more difficult. But honestly, I want to commend you guys, because it sounds like you're doing exactly what we need, and I'm excited to see what's going to happen to the field, so thank you, everybody.
Is there anything you guys wanted to respond to? Okay. Is there anyone else who has questions or comments about the park? Can you tell if there's anyone online, Curtis? None. Okay, go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah, I wanted to mention about the Promenade Walk. There's several light poles, lights that are, I guess, not working, the light bulbs. I did mention to Councilman Scott Nishimoto and, you know, Taylor Date. So, yeah, I'm just wondering if So, uh, yeah, we're, I'm just wondering if, um, that is part of, um, your folks', um, responsibility in, in taking care of the, the light poles, that the lights are, some of the light bulbs are out. There's a certain, um, light pole that has certain numbers and I, uh, on it. And I refer that to, um, Scott Nishimoto and, um, Taylor. So, um, do you want me to maybe, um, give you the numbers of the, uh, poles? I can email it to you or, uh, send it to you somehow?
Sure. So actually the lights actually, uh, fall under the Department of Facility Maintenance. So we will initiate the work order, um, and then it goes to the Department of Facility Maintenance, who the electricians that will work on the lights. But just keep in mind, right now they're kind of busy with Honolulu City Lights. So it's kind of hard to get them out, um, to fix our lights. But yeah, if you can email me the numbers and then we can submit a work order for that.
So your email ad, address is on the agenda?
No.
Curtis? No?
I can forward it to you, Daryl.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. Okay, thank you.
For sure. All right. I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you guys, not only for fixing the park, but also coming to the meeting and we really appreciate the action planned and we'll tell everyone, please do not step on the grass because we worked really hard and went to a lot of meetings to make this happen. So thank you so much and I hope you have a great holiday season. All right. I believe we are about homelessness now. You're the man of the hour.
Uh, good evening Chair again. Good evening Neighborhood Board Number Eight. Thanks for, thanks for having me back. Curtis, could you probably drive our presentation? But before we start, part of the agenda was to address our homeless outreach and navigation for the sheltered, uh, program that we have at the old stadium right now. We've been there since June ninth, so about four months so far. We came from Kapolei, had a lot of success in getting folks who are on the street, those who are just in predicaments, as you can imagine, and placing at least almost half of these people into next step type of housing. I wouldn't say permanent housing, but if you're reuniting folks with their families, you're moving them back to the mainland because they wanna go back to the mainland because there's someone there to receive them. If they're finding the next level of housing, then we deem that to be a successful program. So what we've seen so far in the last four months at, uh, the old stadium is pretty much the same thing, except the difference to me is that we're have, we have a different type of population. I think the population is more transient because they're coming from the Waikiki area. So I'm not finding a lot of folks who are from, um, necessarily the island. We're finding folks who are from Oiliili and maybe Kamaiki and maybe as far as Wainai in some cases, but we're finding a lot of folks who are just from the mainland. Uh, maybe one to two to five of them. We're not successful in finding them a place to go because most of these folks just wanna stay in place. That is, try the shelter route and then maybe move back to the Waikiki. But as far as success is concerned, we found the same amount of folks who've been moving to successful, we call it indoor solutions. Um, there are some folks, of course, who just don't like rules, who love their lifestyle out in the street. And, and that is fine for this, for this brief moment. And so we're losing about maybe, uh, forty percent of those people go back to the streets. But so far, uh, in the old stadium has been successful. We have a few more weeks to be there. Uh, we expect to see more. Uh, one of the activities there is that we're trying to get folks, uh, in Waikiki bust over to our, to do a bit of a tour to see what it's like, what sheltering does look like. Then we're taking them to our Ebylay areas where we have IHS, who's our service provider. We're having them take a look as to what we have to offer. So we're not sitting, sitting, waiting for people to come to us. We're actually taking folks to the shelters to show them that there is way out of homelessness. So this is gonna be a little bit hard to see for everyone here, but, um, maybe could we bring the lights down just a little bit? What I'm about to offer you is our strategy behind homelessness and how the city is attacking this. Mayor Blangiardi, Director Anton Crockey and the rest of the DCS team have put together a very comprehensive type of strategy for addressing homelessness when it comes down to just sheltering people. So we're gonna start with some of the slides and show you on the left-hand side, some of the decisions that were made based on sometimes what happens in the courts and how we're responding to it from the city side. Up the middle shows you those green boxes to the type of programs that we offer. I think in the past, if you're close to homelessness and its programs back in the late nineties, you'd be, you'd understand the word housing first as the model. That did have some success in the last 20 years. However, what we've added to those programs is more specific type of programs that fit more the complex needs of the folks out in the street. I think most folks would know that, um, it's a very complex issue that we have out, out in the street, those who are homeless. It's not just a mental illness or a substance use, type of disorder or the trauma that they have to endure. Um, there's many different complex situations that they have to go through. It's really hard to find an answer for them. It's a global problem, a global crisis, uh, that we're trying to make the best of it here in Honolulu. Okay, the next slide. So as you can see here, you see the changing landscape. Most of it has to do with the courts, but it comes down to a Martin versus Boise decision in 2018. And then it moves back to our local side. And then you see in the middle, Grant's Pass was a major decision by our Supreme Court, that impacts the suit that the ACLU had with the city. And then finally, most folks might be even used to this because it's just more in the news. But President Trump's executive order on homelessness and that is to find treatment for those who are mentally ill, those who have mental use of, substance use disorders. Um, the treatment there is going to be more robust. I believe the funding is gonna be more robust. If cities can really turn their heads and pivot in that type of direction. So what I'm about to show you is how we're addressing it and what was. Back in 2022, 23, right after the pandemic, you've seen that we, uh, spent a lot of time with emergency shelters, kinda like what you saw here in Honu at the old stadium. And then transitional housing, which is the next step, which is more of a temporary, temporary type of housing to address situations like mental illness and substance use disorders. So you can see those numbers are pretty flat. But what we've done is decide on taking a market segmentation approach. Again, it's a, a marketing word that we use most often in our departments, but you understand if you're a consumer, you're a segment of the population that buys certain type of products based on your makeup and based on your buying behaviors. We're trying to approach it the same way when we look at homelessness and finding and finding what people do need. And this is we call it, it's really tending to specific needs of folks, those specific type of beds. Uh, we call them beds of many flavors. Next slide. So we start with the Honu. You can see it's, it's more of a, a general type of number telling you how many times, 780 times that we're using these beds at these shelters. And you're gonna see to the right as we go to the next slide, that keeps adding up on a tally as to how many beds that we're adding in a different type of way. So you can see to the right is tallying emergency beds. We go to the next slide, you're gonna keep seeing the types of beds of many flavors. This is a detox center. Eight beds, but used 230 times throughout the year. So you're gonna keep seeing this, adding to the tally in the next slides. I think Curtis is finding the rhythm here as to how we're moving. As we keep adding to these specialty type of beds, you'll see that we're probably on the right track. The goal obviously is to not lose sight of the emergency beds and transitional housing, but start building more of the specialty side. When it comes down to what we feel is reflecting, feels affecting most of the people out in the street. Perfect. All right. You can keep going, Curtis. People can probably see that it keeps adding to the right. I see affordable housing beds that we probably never had before out in the west, Makaha. Uh, our behavioral, um, centers, medical respite, really addressing mental illness out here in Diamond Head, right where the old, um, Liaki Hospital is. On the bottom, you see the numbers add up. It's the number of beds that we're serving. It's just a multiplier. So how many beds we're serving. There's probably more to it, people passing through. There's probably about 11 of these types of programs that we're adding. Curtis, if you want, in the interest of time, you could probably skip to the end. I think people kinda understand the cadence and where we're getting to. I hope that's okay with the board and everybody else here.
Yeah, we can look at the presentation more fully later on, too.
Right there. So, uh, you can go one back, Curtis. I'm just gonna ask you to go back once. Okay, it's okay. So you're gonna see, um, the types of programs we have there in green, but how the number of uses for these beds add up. And adding those three blue boxes on the bottom, we will continue to add to that number. Again, because we understand as to what the needs are out there in the street. On the bottom are Rembar State. You might've seen those tiny homes that first came up back in, when I was not here, maybe 2019. That was right in front of Queens. We had those more, added more to our respite along with the respite. Again, giving folks a chance to move from the respite bed to a small little home that they feel that they can probably stabilize and get to the next level. Again, that number on the bottom of the, on the right there, annual beds usage potential is a very conservative type of number. If you look at a place like Honu, top left, there are 780 uses, it's probably gonna be a lot more. And every other box will tell you it's gonna be a little bit more. We're just trying to give you a figure. All right. So how we just compare against, um, two years ago, you'll see that there is a distinct difference in how we're going to market now. And looking at specialty treatments, transitional housing, of course, affordable, affordable, permanent. As everyone would testify to, we do not have enough affordable homes, um, on this island, if not in the state. I know our housing department, land and management is really working on that aggressively. So I, you can go to the next, the next one. I think it's the end. So in, in conclusion, what I'm trying to, I can explain to you is that your city is working hard in a very different type of way versus the rest of the cities of the nation to attack what we think is out there. Not just to put everyone in one home and then put some wraparound services around that and just pray that there's enough social workers, pray that there's enough psychiatrists there, uh, which we know there's a bit of a shortage of, but try to get them into small type little villages or small type of, of programs, about 50 beds and handle it in a very, very type of intimate way.
Great. Thank you very much for coming to the meeting, sharing all of that. And thank you for, um, also crunching all the numbers this year. I feel like the first meeting that you attended, you talked about how you wanted to get more numbers and it's great to see all the numbers here. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions? Daniela?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome, Daniela.
Do you have an idea of all this homeless population? How many are employed or have some kind of a job?
I wouldn't guess for you. Uh, I mean, Daniela, I, I've seen numbers nationally that, uh, maybe get to about 10 to 15%. But I have to verify that if you wanna come to our, you're talking about our state. I think that, yeah, nationally, I think the number is very low, but I'll give you an instance. In Ebylay, we have a program run by IHS that's called Men and Work, uh, Men and Women Work Shelter. Therefore, you must be working and you must pay a certain amount per month, maybe $250 to stay there. It's a very clean, air-conditioned television kitchen bunk bed type of environment where again, you can stabilize and save monies, um, as long as you're working. So there's some conditions, uh, to some of our shelters, but I'll find that number for you.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate that. My, I'm concerned that.
Daniela, can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me? This way. Okay, sorry. I'm concerned that, um, if people, if some of these homeless had some type of a job, that would help overall in the, in then getting out of the loop. Because what do they do once they are in a, in a shelter, they have their own bed and then that's a big concern of mine. Thank you.
My comment to that, Daniela, I share that concern is, um, when I first started this, I, I thought maybe that all homeless were, were lazy. Everyone kinda thinks that way. I think the people I speak, speak to, but I think they're more lost. And they just need guidance to get to that spot where, um, someone can counsel them, like a social worker, like an outreach person. Get them to the point where they feel that they're productive members of society. You're right about that.
Even just some kind of volunteer work is already the first step to get into some kind of a daily routine or a healing process. And there is so much need for all kinds of volunteer work, uh, jobs that are, some are very simple. They, they are not, um, co, um, jobs that require a particular coordination or particular skills. Very simple. There is so much need for that. Thank you.
I agree. I agree.
Go ahead.
Uh, to contribute a little bit to this discussion, every time that our the powers that be decide to do city sweeps and throw away everyone's belongings, they make it harder for those folks to be able to get a job because important documents like birth certificates, social security cards, government issued IDs, all of the documents that you need to show that you can work in the United States, are lost and then that can become a barrier. Yeah. So there's a lot of data that shows the connection with sweeps and how people lose belongings that are important for us to support them.
Anyone else here on the board? Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, um, I just had a question. Uh, thank you for the presentation, first of all, um, and definitely appreciate the complexity of the issues. You showed like the various types of beds that are required. Uh, what I'm curious about is you started off your presentation talking about maybe the lack of success in terms of some individuals who aren't interested in the, any of the beds at all. And I guess the numbers or the uses of beds, um, doesn't provide a lot of information about the like overall success outcomes. So I was just wondering, what, what does that look like? And do you have measurements or metrics available on success outcomes?
Yes, so, um, our continuum of care, continuum of care organization. The continuum of care organization, uh, HMIS tracks that. As far as your question about, what defines success? Is that what your question could be? Uh, there, there aren't too many standards. There are too many standards out there that tell us. There aren't too many standards, uh, that measure success. There are some that are a little murky about, let's just say 50% of the people who come through a, uh, emergency shelter, who go to a placement is very good compared to maybe, um, 30 cities that maybe have a 20% rate. So it doesn't take everything overall. I, I think measuring homelessness is almost as complex as the people who are homeless. Everyone's trying to get a, find the right way of measuring it. But from my standpoint, if someone tells me only 20% move on to a next level or we get 50, I'd say it's successful. Maybe not wildly, but, but it is successful. There is data that captures though, some of the, the performance measures that you're looking for. Just let me know what you wanna know.
Are there any big metrics that you are looking at every single day? I think you had mentioned a couple of months ago that you were gonna build a dashboard. Um, and I didn't know what metrics might be on that.
Yeah, so I, I think in the past, many folks have different types of systems, ways of, of counting what we have out there. How many move into our program systems? How many move out, maybe back into literal homelessness? out, maybe back into literal homelessness. They call it recidivism. Again, HMIS has that, so it allows us to kind of understand as to all those programs, the seven programs are doing. We have our own in the city that we're building, and right now it's piloted with Honu. It's piloted with Honu in that we know how many people come in, where they're coming from, based some of our metrics just based on Honu. But as far as overall, we have a new system where we're trying to work with the rest of our providers, where we can get a better kind of comprehensive view of that. It'll probably take up until the end of the year where we have something a little bit more robust, but right now it's just the Honu program that we're measuring.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone from HPD stayed on, but I'd be interested if you guys wanted to comment on how the change of strategy has affected how you guys do your job and work with people who are homeless.
Yeah, this is Lieutenant Nishimura. I'll just quickly comment that we really appreciate the efforts of Roy and his team and CORE and all the other social services. That makes it easier for us to be able to make decisions out in the field because we have more options. You know, prior to any of these social services and these types of things becoming active, we were very limited in what types of options we could have. We were limited to arrest or, you know, very limited referrals, but we have a lot now. A lot of these services will come to, actually will come to our location, which is a huge help for us, and it really helps us utilize our limited resources a lot more effectively. So I can say from at least my experience in our area, and particularly in this area, the Makali area, it's made a difference. We've seen that Honu has been here for, you know, a couple of months, and it's really, really, really helpful. So we really appreciate the support and the work that the city and the state actually is putting into this effort, again, to give us many, many more options to help the, help the issue.
And I do want to add to that. Lieutenant Nishimura, you would probably agree that there is more of a drive towards training officers in crisis intervention. There's, I think, a 40-hour type of class that you all take that more of our folks are just in that way. Would you say that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. 100% agree. That helps us, again, to give us more options, and we appreciate all those efforts in giving us better training with regard to mental health and, again, just in dealing with the homeless issue.
All right. Thank you so much for sticking around and sharing that with us. That was really cool, Lieutenant. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Maybe you can use Drew's, use Drew's mic?
Thank you again. And if this is outside of the current conversation, no need to have an reply, but, or an answer. But if it is possible, is it possible to know to what time or type of crimes are homeless usually or more common vulnerable to? What type of crimes they are vulnerable, not committing, vulnerable? I don't know if, even if there is such a study or something.
Yeah, I think that's a question that HPD and I can, can move over.
Sure.
Yeah, and we'll get an answer for you.
Thank you very much.
All right. If you're a community member, Laura, I see your hand raised. You want to come up? Anyone else has questions, you can come up to the mic, too.
Hi, Roy. Thank you very much. Laura Ribby, community resident. Two things I mentioned once before. If the recycle bins could go out everywhere, people that are enterprising will pick up from the recycle bins. Also, you could have a day that our representatives could put out a recycle for Honu, and they could pick up, and then the enterprising ones could go and take them to the recycle center. It's a very good way of going. Also, at the Moiliili Japanese Cemetery, we do receive people that do not have homes, and they come in and they do work for us, and if they come a few times, we will give them gift cards to the grocery stores, which they can get nice plate lunches for. So there's probably other places like that that could do it also.
Go ahead.
Hi, Alison Peterson. Two quick questions. Are the, your participants, I don't know what you call them, but are they being affected by the shutdown? You know, I can imagine that some are on SNAP or EBT or anything like that. And the other question is in regards to what Randira said about, you know, the IDs and everything. Has there been any kind of program or facility where there's like locker spaces or something like that, where it's secured that they can leave things that are valuable, not only for if there's a sweep or, but just there's sometimes just, you know, there's thefts going on?
So the answer to the second question is during these, we call them enforcements. I think the popular vernacular is sweeps. When we give notice that we're going to be going through a park, we give 24-hour notice. It is law that we have to do that. And when we give notice that we have people on the ground letting folks know there that we'll be coming through here in 24 hours at this certain time. If those want to move, they can. If those want to just have their items there, they will be, we will tag them and move them to where they want to go, which would be only the halava storage center. So let's say we give them notice, we come back the next day, they still haven't moved. They can move, they will have to move after giving 30 minutes of time. They can gather all their documents, everything that they need. We're very, very humane about that. We're very diligent about knowing what we can and cannot do. I can't help what goes across the nation, but I know what we're doing is right for the people there. Number one, because the workers, our city workers, know these people because they've gone through this many, many a times. So there's ample warning, there's proper storage of their property. You have to go to the halava. We hold, I believe, for 72 hours. You're allowed to make phone calls to let us know whether you might be a little bit late, but it's a very humane way of keeping them, their items in storage along with their IDs, which they should have on their person. I can't remember the second question. The person... Oh. Yeah, I don't know the answer to how people are going to be affected by SNAP, but again, I always think that people who are on the brink and have to endure a situation where they're just uncertain of what's going to happen, we're very aware of that. Our providers are more aware of that than I am because they're closer to the ground, knowing that they have clientele who've gone through the system and maybe have righted themselves, but a situation like this could put them right back in a very precarious situation.
Anyone else in the community with questions? Come up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Jenny Suzuki. I've been working in the Muili area for, wow, 2008. So homeless is, I guess, without a home, these people, I feel a little bad for them because, you know, they have their carts at our property. So when these sweeps come through, they push them to our property. So this was one that happened maybe the other week. I don't know if it had anything to do with the sweeps, but I ended up calling down to earth because I know these carts are expensive. They came to pick that up. It doesn't belong to them, unfortunately, so I got it back to their owner. I called the airport because they had a number as well. But going back to the locker thing, I'm wondering if there's something more permanent where, you know, they're not just pushing into the community, where it becomes now our issue to find out what to do with it and those types of things. So that's one of, one of the things that we've been dealing with. The other one is the mental health issue. So this gentleman scratched up my car. I went out to go to my car, and he was scratching it. And when I was out there, he asked me if I had money. I said no, so I left my car. I just walked away, and then he asked me if this was my car, and he proceeded to tell me that he was going to put me in my car and rape me. So I filed a police report, and I know some of these people are in an easy, not in an easy situation to be fixed, you know, their situation be fixed. But I did want to present to you that these situations hit home, and I don't know what the solutions are. It sounds like you're working really hard, but sometimes, you know, there's still left in the community for us to wonder how we can help and how to protect ourselves and our property. But I do appreciate efforts.
I will comment on that. I think everyone knows that if there's a situation where there was a threat, that you will all call 911, and an officer should be right there. In fact, where we are at Honu, there are two officers there 24 hours a day in two different shifts. So if you can't yell out to them, who are right across the street, they will find officers to come there, a community police team to be there. What we are also working on, I shouldn't say working on, but we have in our steed is CORE, which people might not know is a crisis outreach engagement type of team. They're part of our emergency services team, folks in the ambulances, but these folks are more equipped to take care of the homeless individuals, whether it might be a medical aid situation, but now most importantly, outreach. So they can be called between 7:00 and 3:00 o'clock, Monday through Friday, and the phone number is 768-CORE, C-O-R-E.
All right. And there's anyone else here in person? I think we have a couple online. One thing, Roy, I know that you and I have been in some email about this, but there's been comments about trash cans and removing trash cans or so forth. I am personally not in favor of removing trash cans since I use trash cans. I'm wondering, though, if it is possible to change the lids on the trash cans or change the design of the trash cans. We've all been in cities that you have to open it like you would sending the mail, and that keeps the trash inside there. I think there's plenty of reasons why trash would end up on the ground that has nothing to do with someone who is homeless, just like the wind that has been really insane the past couple of days. So I don't know if that's something that you are able to look into or that's a DFM question, but that'd be really great if we could revamp those.
Okay, yeah, that would be a DFM question, and we can probably take that for the next meeting.
Yeah, all right, Dan, if you don't mind if I forward that to you.
There's probably a couple others that we can add to it.
Okay. All right, let me just check online. All right, go ahead, Joanne.
Hey, Roy. Is this Roy Miyahara?
Hi, Joanne.
Hi. Well, I talked to you in the past, and you know my opinion differs from many of the members there. I don't believe what we are doing is helpful to the homeless. In fact, I think we are enablers. We're enabling them to keep breaking the law. When they are breaking the law in the park, they are loitering, they put up tents with the sign that all says they're not supposed to do so. I don't know why it keeps going on. And also, I'm opposed to all these affordable housing that are coming into our area, and nobody is telling us about it, you know? And some of the people that are coming here are, I'm sorry to say, but a lot of trouble. We were having a lot of trouble looking at Moiliili, the stabbing and this and that. But I feel that instead, why don't you build an institution? I don't believe we should be paying to store their, whatever, their belongings because that's not our responsibility. And why should taxpayers have to pay for that? Why should we be the ones who have to burden, have the burden of all this tax, the cost fall on us? I think that we should have the homeless clean up the parks, clean the bathrooms up, everything they destroy. Why can't we make them work and earn their keep in places that we are building for them? Also, you talked about CORE, but I did call CORE, they didn't come out, but when I passed Manoa, I saw one homeless person in the park with five people surrounding her. So it kind of makes me think that depending on the zip code, that CORE is going out of their way to help certain areas.
30 seconds.
But when I called CORE, I don't see anybody in my park addressing the issue of many homeless, not just one, but many. So I would like to get some kind of response to this because we're doing the same thing over and over and getting the same results. That's it.
Okay, Joanne, you have my phone number. I can get you in touch with, my phone number, I can get you in touch with our person on the east side, and we can kind of work on the issues that you have out there in Manoa.
I did, no, I don't live in Manoa. I live in Moiliili. I'm saying in Manoa, somebody calls, five people go out, but if I call in Moiliili, nobody comes. That's the issue. I've called you, I left you messages several times. Nobody likes the opposing party, which is me. So that's why I don't get called back because I have the opposing view of not the majority in Hawaii.
Okay, Joanne, I'm going to move on. Thank you. Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, Roy. I really appreciate your presentation tonight. I just have one question. Having come back from Washington State from a, our transportation conference, one of the things that came up was Wash, the state, their state DOT was looking at exploring training programs to work with houseless individuals within their, like, encamping on state property, but they are also exploring doing subsidized or free transit passes for their, working with Seattle, Seattle Department of Transportation. I was, my question is, I was wondering if there was any discussion of providing more affordable transit options for, public transit options for houseless individuals? I know the city has a low transit fare program, but for those where every dollar counts, do you know if that has been explored or if that's sort of not really at the junket time?
No, you don't stand alone that has been explored. I should follow up on it on Tuesday, tomorrow, so I'll follow up with you on it. But they do talk about the whole, whole cards and maybe having a temporary or a lower type of fare for them.
I see. Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we are good on questions. Thank you so much for coming to the meeting multiple times this year. It's been great to see you. All right, have a good one.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both.
All right. Daniel, take it away.
All right, thank you. Dan Brick, WBD Director, Environmental Services. So I have some highlights from the mayor's newsletter. So Oahu and all of Hawaii says farewell to legendary musician who left lasting impact on the island scene. That was Fiji. The newly inaugurated members of the Honolulu Ocean Safety Commission pulled their first meeting at Honolulu Halei. Mayor Blongardi welcomes a Harvard Bluebird City Fellow to Oahu to help, to help housing and regulatory reform. And the Honolulu Charter Commission seeks input from island residents about potential amendments to the city's governing document, which I'll give a short presentation of after these updates. The Skyline Service expands this month to new stations, including at the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam and Honolulu Airport. So as always, this edition of the newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. So getting into some updates. So crosswalks and traffic safety. So last month, Member Manina stated that DTS worked with middle school students about road safety in the neighborhood. Can DTS provide a summary of possible roadway improvements on Eisenberg Street? And will the speed limit change on Eisenberg Street? So DTS is proposing a road diet on Eisenberg Street between Kapialani Boulevard and King Street. The road diet will consider adding bicycle lanes, pedestrian refuge islands, and other measures to improve safety for all road users. So right now, there's no change to the 25 mile-per-hour speed limits at this time. So Member Manina asked if the city will rehabilitate and repaint crosswalks at South Street and Makahiki Way near the Makali Library and Kapialani Avenue and Pa'ani Streets nearby Alawai Community Park. So the mentioned crosswalks will not be remarked at this time as both were identified as a high-injury location in the Vision Zero Action Plan when previously marked. So DTS is in the process of performing a study to evaluate these high-injury locations and determine the feasibility and type of improvements that may be made in these areas. And then question three, will DTS dock... And then question three, will DTS document and make public announcements about future crosswalk removals? And prior to the proposed removal of any city-owned and maintained crosswalk, DTS will notify the public via letter to the area's neighborhood board and city council member. Additionally, DTS posts a legal notice in the Honolulu Star advertiser and posts a public notice and flashing barricades at each side of the crosswalk. Okay, so moving on, Aloei Bridge Project. What is the current phase and timeline for the Aloei Bridge Project? So on June 25th, 2025, the Aloei Bridge Project reached a significant milestone with the completion of the federally required consultation required under Section 106 of the Historic Preservation Act. The federal government is now reviewing the final environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. The design, build, procurement is scheduled for winter of 2025. And future updates can be found on the Alapono website, Traffic investigation, so member Aldana requested a report and statistics from DTS Investigation at Kuilei Streets and Waikha Road. So in response, we asked that you contact the Department of Transportation Services Traffic Control and Development and Calming Urban Branch at 808-768-8334 for further information on inquiring copies of government records. So the McCully Street Bridge. Member Minerva claimed the McCully Street Bridge is dangerous and in disrepair. When will the city repair McCully Bridge? And this was referring to the bridge at the end of McCully Street that crosses over the Aloei Canal. So city bridges are routinely inspected on 24-month intervals as specified by the National Bridge Inspection Standards. The last routine inspection for McCully Street Bridge occurred on September 10th of 2024 and rated the bridge to be in generally fair condition. So DTS will program to rehabilitate the bridge if required by upcoming 2026 inspection. If necessary, the future project would be based on priority and funding availability. And now BWS is currently in the design stages to replace the deteriorating utility supports for the 16-inch water main on the upstream side of the bridge. And DFM is working on the procurement to repair the vehicle damaged portion of the bridge railing. So dog park rules. Allison Peterson asked, when DPR will provide clarity on rules for dogs? When will dog park signage be installed? And for HPD, how can residents report unleashed dogs and dog attacks? Can HPD reps share this response? So from Department of Parks and Rec, currently there are two off-leash dog parks in the McCully, Mo'ili'i areas. Excuse me. Kalo Place Mini Park, Aloei Neighborhood Park. Both of these locations have standard dog park rules on signs. Current city park rules regarding dog parks is also posted on the city's website So if clarification is needed on specific rules, please contact Mark Koga, East Honolulu Rec Supervisor, at 808-768-8946. And from HPD, residents are advised to call 911 to report unleashed dogs, animal nuisances, or dangerous dogs. HPD works with Hawaiian Humane Society to resolve nuisances and dangerous dog reports as these complaints are handled by various city agencies. And I would be the appropriate person to share this response from HPD. So moving on to HNL Build. Chair Lee asked if DPP could provide a how-to-use HNL Build, I guess, presentation? So there are various training materials on DPP website. If you have specific questions, feel free to contact DPP at 768-8000 or via email dp@honolulu.gov. So there's also video tutorials linked on the DPP's website. There's step-by-step guides and also a section for frequently asked questions. So moving on to 1026 Kamolee Lane. So Jenny Suzuki raised concerns about proposed housing project. What is the building permit status for this project? So the project is ready for permit issuance, but is now pending submittal of contractor statements and supplemental information sheet. And then finally, member Robati raised concerns about the one-month response time for questions asked of the mayor's rep. So we agree that the response time for some questions can be shortened, especially those questions that have been asked previously by other boards. But however, for most questions, there's a lot of legwork that goes on with the other departments to get responses. And we're dependent on other departments' timelines to come up with those responses. So the Neighborhood Commission Office is approaching this issue with a holistic perspective. And they're looking at possibly a database where they can access answers for questions that have already been asked for a quicker response. And they are considering the best way to deliver responses to board members in the public. So the Neighborhood Commission Office suggests using HNL 311 app to submit concerns and issues to the city if the once-per-month timeframe is too slow. So residents can submit their concerns through HNL 311 at any time of day. And it allows residents to track their individual requests. So you can learn more about this app and their desktop version. So you can go to www.honolulucitycouncil.org/report-city-issue. So I'll take any questions now and then I'll have a short presentation on the city charter.
All right, thank you, Dan. Any questions from the board right here? Michelle?
Hi, thanks for all of the updates. Appreciate the update on the Aloei Bridge. Good to see progress happening there. I have a quick question about a term that you used. I think it was a road diet, referring to the Eisenberg Street. I'm not familiar with that term, could you just define that?
Yeah, basically, they're gonna shrink down the road, basically, yeah.
Chris, do you want to define road diet?
A road diet could be anything from traffic calming, devices of like extending out curbs or adding trees or getting rid of a lane. What street are we talking about right now?
Eisenberg.
Eisenberg. I don't know what the plans for Eisenberg are.
Yeah, yeah, they are going to... Yeah, so they're gonna be adding bicycle lanes, pedestrian refuge islands, and other measures to improve safety for all road users. So these are additions that they're gonna...
So right now Eisenberg is two lanes. Or are we talking from King to Kapialani?
Correct.
So right now it's two lanes in both directions. We're gonna go down to one lane in each direction?
It's not clear to me if they're actually removing lanes. I would think that's probably a possibility. I mean, you need space to add these improvements in, right?
Yeah, it seems like they're probably gonna be adding bike lanes and if there's pedestrian islands in the middle to help with crossing the street with a decent amount of safety. Yeah, thank you.
Daniela?
Yes, please guide me if this is the correct time for this question.
All right, I will interrupt you if it's...
All right. Is it possible at the next board meeting to have the Department of Transportation Director and the city council to actually give us a complete presentation of the status of the development of the bridge, Aloei Bridge on the canal?
Daniela, so I can talk about it with DTS, probably not for next meeting because we have a lot of stuff on the agenda for next meeting, but for January.
Okay, so do I need to do something?
We'll just send me an email.
We can ask, yeah.
Okay, so for January, I can ask and when can I have an answer for the presentation?
Well, I will certainly be here next month to provide an answer, but we may be able to get you something sooner.
Yeah, so we have this...
If you want them to come to the meeting, then we just have to work it out logistically. Who will come, if they'll be able to come to the next meeting? So if we put them on the agenda, I'll tell you what we put them on the agenda.
Okay, I want to remind everybody that it's affecting a lot the McCallum Road neighborhood. So we need a thorough re, how can I say, review, going over again what's happening in all details. Thank you.
Sure, understood.
All right, any board members online? Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, Morgan. I dropped in the chat or wrote in the chat just a quick context about the labor reduction, a road diet that Deputy Director had mentioned. I'm glad to see that DTS is pursuing that option. For anyone who may be interested, an exemplary example would be Kamai Ma'afro Road in Kaliki or Alanakunani Street in Salt Lake. Regarding crosswalks, I appreciate the update regarding DTS decision-making, although I will express concern as to why, as to the foundation of that decision-making. The Federal Highways Administration Manual on Road Design actually is very explicit that removing crosswalks, crosswalk markings on high-volume, high-capacity roads is actually poor design decision-making. Effectively, when you have multi-lane roads like King, South King Street, it's better to not to complement the crosswalk with more enhanced features like pedestrian refuge islands or rapid flashing beacons or even lower speed limits. I guess my one question then would be, would DTS be able to provide more of a holistic contextual understanding as to like awareness as to how the process is selected? And if the DTS would be willing to work with the state board committee on quick build solutions to make these crosswalks safer or... Because I feel as of today, we have 70 road fatalities on Oahu compared to 38 last year. I think removing crosswalk markings, although the crosswalks are still there, contravenes the city's stated Vision Zero objectives. And I think it's just where, I do appreciate the feedback and updates, but I think I would like to work with the neighborhood board and the, and DTS on a more holistic solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Go ahead, Laura.
Laura Ruby, community resident, two quick things. One, the proposed Aloei Bridge. First of all, the website is way out of date by years. And second of all, that build, that towered monstrosity should be removed from it because if they say they're gonna have a design-build project, then you shouldn't be giving somebody already what you want. A design-build is something that the contractors will propose and then they can go forward. And so of course I'm asking for loads more, namely, there's no follow-up with future maintenance and security and all of that. But for next time, I hope you could have the website updated with the concern that the design-build be open and we're looking for the criteria that the design-build will be featuring too. Because that's not featuring design-build. That's saying, we, the city and county, want it this way. But if they're gonna say design-build, it's letting people see what comes in, okay? And the second of all is Eisenberg. They already put parking meters on Eisenberg. So it's a little strangely conflicting to cut down the street lanes and have bicycle lanes, parking meters, and so forth there. I think some departments need to get together and figure it out better. Thank you.
I can speak on Laura's concern about design-build a little bit. So generally, in design-build projects, there is a small amount of design that the city does. Basically, generally, it's about 30%. And the design-build contractor would come on board and complete that design from the 30% point to the 100%. So there is some guidance that the city provides, even in a design-build contract. There is some design input from the city.
Great.
Kayla Hulani. Hi, thank you for your presentation. I'm Kayla Hulani Wong, community member. Regarding Eisenberg Street, Kapialani to King Street. My question is, does the community have any say? Or has there been any feedback collected from that community? Because I live right there. And like Laura was saying, with the Halei Mo'ili'i coming up, they're already taking out one lane. So there's a lot of traffic congestion happening already. There is parking meters too, so it's just, I just don't, I see the importance of safety, but what feedback has been collected from the people that live there and use that road? Is my question. And then I have another question about Bill 7. I don't know if that would be you or not, but do you want me to ask that now? Okay, okay, and then same for Bill 7. Does the community have any say on these developments? What Bill 7 developments are underway in our neighborhood in Mo'ili'i? And how do we see what developments are coming up? Because there's different things happening and it's hard to distinguish the difference unless we kind of do like a deep dive. And another possible suggestion for the Eisenberg Street is to install like a red traffic light because there's a lot of, there's like Citrin, Date, Eisenberg, and then I think that's Lime area where there are a lot of like people running the red light. So that's something that, you know, to consider. Thank you.
All right, Joanne, I think you have a question. Oh, wait, hold on, sorry. Anyone else on the board? Let me go to Justin first and then I'll go to you, Joanne. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Chair. May I just comment quickly on Eisenberg Street? I think because Cam and a few other community members have some concerns. Just to clarify, so lane reductions also, I think inappropriately called road diets, essentially are selected on streets with fairly modest road traffic volumes. So the Federal Highways Administration would, for context, classify that as any road with 20 day, with an average of, sorry, average daily traffic or ADT of 20,000 vehicles per day. Eisenberg Street, to my understanding, has daily traffic, believe it or not, around 5,000 to 6,000, which is very, very small in comparison. Although construction, combination of construction, peak traffic hours, if you're looking at from morning or late afternoon rush hours, will make that seem it's more intensive. I do, will concur, I think it would be wonderful when appropriate, if DTS or the Honolulu Complete Streets Office could give an update as to the design selection for a lane reduction. But also, I would ask what type of bike facility they're seeking to include. Just generally, lane reductions, keep all the on-straight parking, in this case metered, and adding generally a more of a low-stress bike facility. I would be curious... I would be curious if it's a single solid line or a buffered bike facility like on a walking street. So I just wanted to give that clarification if that may be helpful for folks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Justin. All right, Joanne?
Just FYI, can you make sure you see who's raising their hand first? Anyway, this is for, what was his name again? Sorry.
Dan?
Dan, yeah. Regarding DTS, I don't know if this is relevant for this conversation, but I've been trying to call, I've called John Noochi so many times, talked to Riley Palavas and other people there as well. And they were supposed to put up more signs in Mo Ili Ili area down my street, close to Date. And Date Cup to King and Date to Kapilani. So they put some signs, but nobody pays attention to the signs. So I don't know if people can read or whatever, but they're not paying attention to the signs. So how are we gonna rectify the situation when you put up signs and nobody pays attention? Police can't come that often to ticket. And then they're also parked on Date Street and they're also parked on King Street. They don't pay attention to that too. So maybe all meter, in the whole area, put meters up so that people will be paying attention. And then they will get more tickets because the police will notice that the meters are not being fed. And when it's 3:30, when they're supposed to leave, they don't leave. So they block all the traffic coming down King Street. So we've had those issues. Plus also, so many affordable housing has come up into our area, which we're not aware of sometimes. Right next to the Honganji Church, Mo Ili Ili, Honganji and University, there is also affordable housing that has no parking. I can't believe that you're gonna build a affordable housing with no parking.
30 seconds.
They're gonna park at the church, which Reverend there has been aware of and not really pleased with the situation. So, you know, instead of gent certification in our area, it started seeming like our Mo Ili Ili is becoming like a ghettoization. So I don't want that.
Do you have your question, Joanne?
Yeah, that's the question. What are you gonna do to promise us that this area is not turning into that? And how are you gonna enforce all this parking? Because I see it being enforced in other areas. But I have to call like so many times a week just to get this people off the grass and off of the illegal parking areas. And please don't show up on time.
Thank you. All right, Cam?
How are you gonna figure that out? That's what I wanna know.
Okay, well, DTS is not here, so.
Yeah, we'll get back to you.
Go ahead, Cam.
Yes, I guess a question and a comment is echoing the lady from the neighborhood there who asked, you know, where is this interest in a road diet for Eisenberg coming from? Is it generally coming from the neighborhood? Or is this something that's being imposed as part of Complete Streets? You know, there's just like a citywide campaign against car drivers. And, you know, so we're losing lanes every time you turn around. So I guess my question is, where is the demand coming from for this change?
Yeah, we'll have to check with DTS on that. I don't know if it's in policy or feedback that they're getting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, regarding Eisenberg, I'm surprised that they want, the city wants to narrow it. Right now, I believe it's two, going down to Kapilani is two lanes. Coming up from Kapilani to King is one lane with the parking on both sides. And you're gonna narrow it down to one lane each way? Now, don't forget, a lot of people need to get access to King or Kapilani. The only other access they have is University Avenue, which may connect to the Alaui Bridge. The other access they have is all the way to Makali Street. And you know, traffic right now is horrendous, no matter what. Any time of the day, you see there's a lot of traffic on King Street, Kapilani Boulevard. More so when you have all these different developments happening. So this seems to be a quick fix by the Honolulu Complete Street project, which does not make sense. They really need to study before they do anything because serving bicyclists, most times they don't even bother to use the bike lane, unfortunately. Not all, but some don't. So you really need to take it back and DTS should give the community an answer because it's gonna affect the rest of the neighborhood area. Thank you.
All right. In the interest of time, I'm going to move on. Thank you very much for taking these and I hope that we can get someone from DTS so we can ask a lot of these questions in person. Thank you so much, Dan. Have a great one.
Do you want the city charter?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Yes, I'll be quick on it. The city charter, it's a major thing. It only gets opened up every 10 years. So it's a big deal. It defines structure, power, and responsibilities for our city's government. It ensures accountability and how the city serves residents. And like I said, it's only updated every 10 years through charter commission and voter approval. So, you know, the proposals can come from the city council, they could come from the mayor, and they could also be citizen initiated. So any amendments must go to voters on the ballot. So the charter commission consists of 13 members and they are appointed. And six are appointed, six members appointed from the mayor. Six members are city council appointed and one member is joint appointed. So they incorporate research, public input, and performance findings into potential charter amendments. So those proposals are incorporated into ballot questions. So voters decide which changes become law. And so this is gonna happen, it's gonna, the charter amendments are gonna be on the ballot for November 3rd, 2026. So when approved, amendments are then incorporated into the charter and they govern Honolulu for the next decade. So very important, the deadline to submit any amendments or proposals or comments on the city charter is November 7th of this year. So it's, I think it's a week and a half away. So the ballot vote on proposed charter amendments will happen November 3rd, 2026. And by participating, residents can help incorporate community priorities into city government. So you may be wondering, how do you submit a proposal? Well, the city charter commission has a website. So it's honolulucitycouncil.org/charter-commission. And you could submit forms or submit ideas via online form or a PDF form. So you'd include your name, contact, what changes you want and why. And the commission will hold meetings this year from December of 25 to April 26, where they'll review proposals and gather testimony. So it can impact city services, taxation, infrastructure decisions, leadership authority. It shapes how fast the city can build, hire, respond, innovate. And it keeps government aligned with community priorities. Things like department structure and responsibilities, leadership appointment powers, election process, term length, budget, authority, spending oversight, and checks and balances between mayor, council, and other agencies can all be affected by the charter. So the last time the charter was made, was, changes in the charter was 2016, 10 years ago. And we did see some notable changes. You know, the Office of Climate Change to Still, Sanability and Resiliency was created. Established the Department of Land Management, created a Honolulu Zoo Fund and strengthened the Police Commission. So people can participate. The Charter Commission holds meetings. The next meeting is November 3rd at 2:30 PM in the City Council Chamber of Honolulu Halei. People can submit testimony or proposals. And most importantly, they can vote on the ballots on amendments to the Charter Commission or the charter. So the charter is, you know, your chance to really shape how the city governs. And, you know, don't waste this once in a decade opportunity to provide some input.
All right, thank you very much, Dan, for that. We're gonna take a one-minute AV break slash stretch break slash, if you need to ask Dan about the commission, you can ask him off this line. But we'll be back in one minute. All right, Taylor, over to you. Hope you're here.
Okay. Hi, Chair Lee. Thank you, folks. In the interest of time, I'll try to keep my report short tonight. But first and foremost, thank you to Chair Lee and the Makali Mo Ili Ili neighborhood board because we're gonna be partnering on a cleanup at Pavaa in Hoppark on December 6th from 9 to 11 AM. We'll need to share details. We'll put it out in the blast, but please. Thank you to DPR for partnering on this. They'll be bringing in all the supplies necessary for this community cleanup. But yeah, we just wanna invite everyone out to just come out, bring your friends and family to join our cleanup in the spirit of the holiday season. And then a fun activity happening this week is they're actually gonna be doing a Halloween family-friendly event at Makali District Park. So Friday, October 31st, from 5 to 8 PM, there's gonna be some games, face painting, haunted house. There's gonna be limited parking at Luna Lilo Elementary. And then someone earlier in the meeting was asking questions about the program for the speeding cameras. So this is a state program, so ultimately we defer to the state. But according to the press release, the warning period that began on March 1st is now ending. And starting November 1st, the cameras will actively issue citations for violations. The automated cameras will detect and record vehicles that either run red lights or exceed the posted speed limit. So once the violation is confirmed, it's a $250 citation. And if it's within, if you get another citation within a six-month period, it just goes up from there. So just keep this in mind while you're driving. There's about 10 intersections right now in Honolulu. So we've shared all this information in our e-bus, but let me know if anyone needs that emailed.
Thank you, Taylor. Lauren, Dan, do you mind in your conversation outside? Thank you. Are there any questions for Taylor slash Councilonishinomoto's office? All right.
Hi, Taylor. I know you've done walks around like Eisenberg Street area. And I had a question about a property that's on Coolidge, 611 Coolidge. It looks like it was like the beginnings of a development, a building, and it just kind of stalled. I was just wondering if you have any information on that property?
Okay, yes, I will check on that this month. I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head, but we can look into it. 611 Coolidge Street? Just confirm me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Drew?
Hi, Taylor. Quick question, just for clarification, this, the cameras that you're talking about for red light and speed, is that in addition to the noise citation issuing cameras?
Yes, those are two separate programs. They're both being piloted, yeah, those are, I'm pretty sure both of them are going to be, it's through DOT, so the state programming. But I mean, of course HPD is going to be enforcing this as well. But yes, that is in addition. So there's two different programs ongoing.
Drew, I can add some context. I was at a traffic summit that was put on by DOT a couple of weeks ago. And they said that they legislatively have to define the decibel level that will trigger a ticket, essentially. So they're collecting data right now, but they haven't set the threshold that it will hit. But it's basically the same camera can collect all of that data. And anyway, they showed us demos and how it works and so forth. So. All right, Joanne?
Yeah, I have a question. Why do we have to do cleanups? Do we not pay taxes for the government to clean up our parks? And also, if you guys are gonna put up cameras to find violations in drivers, could you put up cameras maybe on telephone poles in, by businesses? So we can catch all these criminals who are robbing or hurting people in our district so we can find out who they are? I think that would help a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, more surveillance doesn't seem like a bad idea. But yeah, this is a state program that started piloted this year. So I mean, really, this is in an effort to reduce, I mean, there's been so many terrible like pedestrian accidents. So this is really in an effort for traffic safety, pedestrian safety. And criminals hurting other people as well, not only in traffic, in other areas as well.
Joanne, I think this is about a different program. Okay, I need to move us along. Okay, go ahead. Kaila Hulani.
Hey, Taylor, Kaila Hulani Wong, community member. I have two questions. One is regarding the accessibility of information for Bill 7 developments. I'm not sure if that's you that could answer that or if we can provide information to see that. And then my other question is, so there's a situation that occurred on Coolidge Street where there's two unattended 16-wheeler trucks with trailers and one of the trailers was detached. So my question is, in that type of situation, it was there for about an, over an hour, creating like an ongoing and verifiable traffic hazard. There was no orange cones, no HPD officer there, nothing to mark that. It was very hard to see beyond, you know, to overtake the next lane. So I'm wondering what primary agency or department is responsible for mandating a correction or issuing a citation for a non, what I believe is noncompliance in that, in that event and situation?
Yes, I read your, I believe you emailed us over the weekend. So we're trying to look into it today on that specific issue. But it, you did, it did mention the email that HPD was contacted, was that correct? So were they on site and did they, because they would be the, they would be the people responsible for issuing a citation in that case. Of course, I do, like, you're totally correct that there, there should have been proper signage. There should have been some form of like, like you mentioned, there could have been like an off-duty officer. There should have been all those things. So therefore, I believe that if you did call HPD immediately, then they should have been able to issue citations. As, I just wanted to know, I didn't know exactly what had happened in that situation.
Yeah, HPD did respond. I don't know if Lieutenant is still online, if he can chime into that. If not, I can always follow up. But otherwise, would you know if there, if there should have been safety measures in place by the construction company? Companies that took up like 200 feet of, you know?
Oh, most definitely. There's always supposed to be that protocol. And obviously, in this case, it looks like it was not being followed. But yeah, you did the correct thing by contacting HPD. And if they, they can come on site and then issue the citation. So that was the correct protocol. But yes, there was, there's supposed to be, you know, if they want to park in certain areas, they're supposed to get those permits out from DTS beforehand. There's a, there's a whole bunch of processes that's supposed to happen. And in this case, it looks like obviously it wasn't properly taken care of. And so you did the right thing to call HPD in this case. And it's good you took evidence on our end. I was thinking that we would just follow up to see what was done. And I'm not sure how issuing citations after the fact can go. But I, we can, we are gonna look into that at least because you did have videos.
Okay, all right, yeah, I have the license for everything. And then I know there's other neighbors that probably submitted things too. So I'll look for your response. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for contacting us.
Daisy, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Hi, Taylor. My question is, at the Waikekee Neighborhood Board, Chair Waters mentioned that the Alaui Bridge can be used as an evacuation, which I disagree because if people are trying to get away from the water or whatever disaster using so-called Alaui Bridge that the city was to build, I think it's gonna cost more damage because people will be panicking. They'll be running to each other, they'll be trampling on each other, et cetera. Instead of getting away, they'll be trapped. Instead of getting away, they'll be trapped. So he ignored what, um, emergency management has been telling people. Stay put and go up first floor and above in a reinforced building. So I think that's a dangerous message that Chair Waters has mentioned at the neighborhood board. So I hope that, uh, Councilmember Nishimoto and others look at it as not as an evacuation, um, safety measure, but, um, it's just a regular bridge because people will panic and you never know what happens in emergencies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Daisy. I'll share that with my boss.
All right, um, thank you Taylor for coming. Um, just a reminder, if you guys want to come to the cleanup, it's gonna be on December 6th at 9:00 a.m. at Pavaa Park. All right, um, let's move on to approving our regular meeting written summer for the record. Is there anything that anyone wants to point out about it, or we can move ahead with proving it? Can we approve it? Great. All right, um, so we need to put people on the transportation committee that was established last meeting. Um, what's the procedure that we go through that with Curtis?
Oh yes, you can nominate a chair or, uh, come to a consensus as a board as who would like to serve on the transportation committee.
All right, um, I would like to nominate Justin, who introduced the resolution to start the committee to be the chair of the committee. Do you accept, Justin?
I do. Thank you Chair.
Okay.
Are there other nominations? Okay, saying none. Uh, Justin Manina is now, uh, the transportation committee chair. Uh, if you could raise your hand if you would like to be, uh, appointed to this committee, up to six members. And for those online, if you could indicate, uh, community members are also invited. Uh, but the limit is six board members. Okay. Uh, we have, uh, Chair Morgan Lee. Anyone else? Uh, Ursalis? Any other board members? Daniella? And Michelle? Okay, last call for board members, okay? Uh, saying none, you do have a resident, uh, Victor Limon, who is interested in serving on the committee. Sorry Victor, are you trying to say something?
Yes, yes, please, if I can be part of it.
Okay, Chair, is that okay?
Hi Victor, can you just share us very briefly who you are?
To be the dictator. I like that white man. Y'all think it's a joke. Man, Trump should run for a fifth.
Victor?
Hi, yeah, is, hi.
Hey, thank you for turning on your camera.
Yeah, I, I live on, uh,
Hold on, we can't hear you for whatever reason.
Oh.
Try talking again.
Could you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm Justin's husband. Uh, we live on, uh, Wayola Street. Um, and I work for the city as well. Um, I'm the data analyst for the, uh, Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency.
All right, um, Curtis, is there any conflict of interest if you're related to someone? Okay. All right, so we have no neighborhood board official conflict of interest for related people. Okay. All right, um, Justin, can you just tell us when the next meeting is?
Oh, apologies for the delay. Uh, thank you Chair. Um, our scheduled meeting, um, I had submitted previously a tentative agenda for as an introductory orientation into, um, the city's ongoing safe vision zone, safety action plans. However, in terms of a scheduled agenda, I'm hoping to, I am aiming to schedule our first inaugural meeting in mid-November. Um, preferably, I just, one thing I would like to clarify is, does the meeting need to be on a weekday or weekend? Um, which will, uh, influence the date selection.
Okay, we'll look for you to be in touch with us about this. All right.
And I, an apology, my last note is that again, I will, the introduction, the inaugural meeting will be focused as an introduction into the safe on, says ongoing Vision Zero and Safety Action Plans, as well as, um, I think building consensus amongst our committee, uh, what our priorities are for, uh, safe, accessible, uh, transportation options for our residents, whether walking, biking, taking the bus or driving. And maybe in the next 20 years, uh, maybe the rail. So I really appreciate everyone's, uh, time tonight. All of them.
Thank you, Justin, and we hope you feel better and can come to the next meeting. Um, let's move on to the resolution. Um, this resolution is about a very specific, um, technicality that is in the neighborhood plan that currently requests that if you do not come to a meeting, or if you don't come to three meetings, then you get sent, um, I don't know what the correct word is, certified in first-class mail, which can be tedious and expensive to notify people of the fact that they'll get booted off the board. I would like to just introduce this resolution. Is there anyone that wants to second it?
Aldana seconds.
And if it's fine, we can just approve it. I don't think we need to really discuss it. It's just saying we can use email instead of the mail.
Is there public testimony from those in person or online on this resolution?
No one here. There any objections from the board? All right, I don't know if there's anyone online either. All right, online, all right, great. Thank you everyone for getting this done. It'll be nice to communicate, bring more of our communication on email. All right, hi Gary, you are up to the mic.
Good evening, everybody. Gary Yamashiroya, um, I'm the Special Assistant to the Director of Taxation, but I'm here on behalf of the Governor's Administration. So good to see everybody in person. It's been a couple of months since I've been here. Um, but I don't have any pending issues to report on, however, I will point out that, um, I don't know if you've heard, but it's an issue that's related to your fellow neighborhood boards. Um, and that's, um, regarding the Army Training Lands. So I don't know if you're aware that eight, of eight neighborhood boards that are directly affected, we're gonna have a joint meeting to discuss, um, the, uh, Army Training Lands. So, um, the governor just wants everyone to know, regardless of whether your neighborhood board is, is, uh, affected or not directly, all of you probably want to support your neighborhood boards and weigh in on the issue. So there's a website that was established called engage.hawaii.gov where people can share their thoughts and concerns about key issues, um, which would include the Army Training Lands, but also the Rural Health Transformation Plan. So the website provides background and key documents related to both of these issues so far, and I think that this is a, a good way for the governor to be able to get everybody's input on these really important issues to Hawaii. Um, just so you're aware, the eight neighborhoods boards that are directly affected are Liliha, Aleva, uh, Kalihipalama, Aleamanu Salt Lake, Aea, Pearl City Eva, Makakilo, Kapale, Honokai Hale, Mililani Maoka, Launani Valley. So, um, if you, if you'd like to log on, uh, to engage.hawaii.gov, you can share your support or your views on it, uh, there.
You share the date one more time?
Engage.hawaii?
The date?
Oh, the date? Oh, the date is not, um, my understanding is that it's been delayed, so, uh, it was supposed to happen, but it's been delayed, so. But I'm sure the Neighborhood Commission would probably be able to provide more updates because it is a joint meeting.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I'm here for any concerns or questions.
All right, any questions for Gary from the board?
At the last meeting, you had made mention of sending a report to us two meetings prior, and I don't recall ever receiving that about the unconstitutionality of
I did send one to the Chair.
Okay, then I will ask the Chair, yes.
I can resend it.
Could you please resend it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, so I sent the report with the, with the response from the Attorney General.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that. I avoided too. All right, any other questions on the board? Anyone online?
Traffic Safety Cameras?
Do you know the intersections where the red light cameras are posted in town?
I do not, but I can certainly find out.
It's okay, I think HP would be, we'll do it next time. First.
There's a red light and, um, speed camera at Algaroba and Makali Street. And I know there's one by South King Street and Ward Avenue, but that's not in your neighborhood board.
Thank you Curtis, helpful. Is there anyone else online from the board? Okay, go ahead Laura.
Yes, uh, one, one quick question. I would highly recommend, I do not know this survey or whatever's getting together, is that there be an option of no more, uh, military training on this island? All of the, uh, various places are probably way redundant. Uh, one quarter of all of our land is military. We probably do not need that much. And I'd like to have people in those groups discuss it, the fact that it need not be, or if there is, it's something so minor that it won't disrupt the rest of our community. And we also would have a lot more land for housing and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, so if you could go on engage.hawaii.gov, I'm sure that, I know that the governor's in discussions with the military and trying to negotiate some kind of agreement, but just to give some background, uh, the Board of Land and Natural Resources rejected the Army's final environmental impact statements for both Oahu and Hawaii Island earlier this year. So the Army issued its Record of Decision, uh, in late July for PTA, um, and its ROD for Oahu Train Lands in early August, Governor Green and the DLNR are working with the Army to ensure all legal requirements are met while considering next steps to achieve the best possible outcome for the people of Hawaii. So it's really important that people provide their input on exactly what you said. It's, it's, it's your input that it's valuable for the governor and, and all of, um, everyone to know. So, yeah, engage.hawaii.gov.
Um, per the email, did you send it from Gary or from a different email address?
Uh, may have been either sent from me or one called tax.pio@hawaii.gov.
Okay, I'll keep looking.
But I can resend it. I probably have it if my phone doesn't die.
Is this the one?
Uh, yes. Yes, it's about the bill and why it was vetoed.
Gotcha. Cool, well, we have it in our drive, so that's great. Yes, okay, it is in the drive if anyone wants to look at it. Thank you Gary. Um, let's keep going, Elmer.
Hello, I'm America University of Hawaii. Um, I just have top updates from the last meeting, um, community requests. Um, Community of Schools property. We did reach out to Richard Chang, Asset Manager for Community of Schools. Um, I included the Chair and Vice Chair on that email, asking them to kind, make sure you can update the community and your board. So I urged the Chair and Vice Chair to nag them to make sure they, they do report. Um, all they could say is they will have a public, um, announcement coming soon. To me, that means you gotta bug them so they can do it. So that's all I know so far. Um, there was a request also from Laura regarding, um, parking on campus on the evenings, why it's not, why we charge. Uh, University of Hawaii, um, commuter services, which is our parking shuttle, is not general funded. We have to generate our own funds. Uh, with that in mind, we do have a discussion every year about parking in the evenings. Uh, it really is to supplement the costs, the maintenance and operation of the parking. It, it's not a closed deal. We just said every year there's a discussion to kind of revisit that, so hopefully that can help. Um, regarding College of Education and its move, it is part of the bigger aspect was going on with the Ever Properties. Um, that is still ongoing. Um, Lori Lum from, um, PBR is, I think the leader in that one for us, not PBR, yeah, PBR, what's not being, um, is the lead on that. So I'll make sure that she can, um, respond to you guys on that component. Um, as you know, we are, we like everybody else, the, the federal shutdown does impact the whole state. We have about 7,000 employees that either are put, are paid full-time or part-time through the fund, so it does impact us. We do have funds to provide them for the next month or so, um, crossing our fingers that this doesn't happen, but it impacts all 10 campuses, not only Manoa. Uh, we are constantly, uh, what we do more so is try to help the governor and the counties with whatever we can help them with. That's our biggest concern. It's, it's a bigger issue than the University of Hawaii. So, but outside that Chair, I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you for coming to the meeting. Is there anyone on the board here have questions for Elmer? Or online? All right, go ahead Laura.
Yes, um, just to follow up what you were saying about the parking, it was coupled with the idea that town and gown is really important. And that to bring people on campus when we have so many resources there, all of the, um, the, uh, theaters, all of the lecture halls, all of the places to go and congregate, and opening up an awful lot of the, um, the, uh, eating areas in the evening and the, and the bars, the wonderful east-west center area, everything. All of that could be coupled with a dollar or two add-on and still have the parking free. And you would, you know, let them compensate, figure out the financial things for it. But, but let's make it a real active campus like it used to be years ago and really make it. And also, you, you know that I'm concerned about the College of Ed properties and the view planes and the green spaces and the outrage from the Manoa residents especially, but also all of us that worked on campus for many years. We really don't want to see something that looks like a lose-lose proposition because cam schools will simply outbid everything you want to do with Puck Sally. So going, not going into, you know, retail and so forth. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Thank you for coming, Elmer. Appreciate it and go Rainbow Warriors. All right. Um, I don't think that Senator Ihara is coming tonight. He said he's on Molokai, and I don't think that Senator Fukunaga is coming either. I don't know, either of them have sent staff, but I don't think anyone's coming. You are all right, Venus, for coming, wanna give us an update for Senator Moriwaki?
Okay. Hello?
Hi.
Can you, hi, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thanks for coming.
Yes, um, so Senator Moriwaki is working on legislation. Um, as you know, the upcoming session is, uh, looming before us. Um, uh, so she's been working on some public safety issues. It remains a top priority for her. Um, there's a couple laws that'll be sunsetting pretty soon. Um, the 2024 Habitual Violent Crime Law will be sunsetting in a couple of years, as well as the Return to Home Program will sunset in 2026. Basically, the Habitual Violent Crime Law, and I know your, um, time is, is limited, but, um, basically, if, if someone keeps committing a violent crimes again and again, and already has three or more convictions for violent offenses within the past five years, then their next violent crime can be charged as a felony, even if it would normally be just a misdemeanor. So, um, that's, um, some legislation that she's been working on. Regarding Capuna Bills, um, she's Chair of the Capuna Caucus. So, um, we submit five bills each year to address issues important to the Capuna. So we're currently accepting legislative proposals until October 31st. And we'll be voting on them in December to determine the five bills included in the, uh, Capuna Caucus package for this upcoming session. Um, thirdly, uh, the Alaway Canal, Senator Moriwaki has been meeting with stakeholders to help keep the Alaway Canal clean. So we have state and county agencies collaborating to prevent So, we have state and county agencies collaborating to prevent illegal dumping and improve enforcement in the Alaui Canal. Monitoring like new signage and drone oversight. This partnership along with the UH-led Waterway Clearing Project aims to create long-term solutions that keep the Alaui clean. Fourthly, we do have a town hall that's coming up. It's the Waikiki Town Hall. It'll be November 3rd at Jefferson Elementary School Public Library from 5:30 to 7:00. Again, that's November 3rd, Jefferson Elementary School Public Library from 5:30 to 7:00. If you have any questions, you can call our office, 586-6740. We'll have speakers, Scott Psyki, the Insurance Commissioner at Sniffen DOT Director, Major Mike Lambert, Department of Law Enforcement, and Dan Anderson from the American Red Cross of Hawaii. So, that'll be something you can look forward to if you're interested. We have a survey that we've received 277 responses for. So, we will be reporting that at the next Board meeting. Thank you so much for the 277 residents who responded. Finally, Senator Moriwaki would like to remind everyone to take your COVID and flu vaccines. The 2025-2026 COVID-19 and flu vaccines are now available. And these immunizations are provided at no cost for HMSA, Medicare and Kaiser Permanente members. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Thanks, Venus. All right. Any questions here? I am not... All right, go ahead, Joanne.
Hey, Venus. Hi, Joanne. So, my question is, since she's working on criminal bills, I, you know, I'm for capital punishment. That'll never happen in a democratic state. So, I'm thinking of a program where you have prisoners that are going to do work-related things to pay society back for their crime. Because right now, I feel like in this kind of a state, we always giving them vocational things, food, but we need to teach them that they need to pay us back. That's what their productive citizens do, is to work to pay back the society. So, what are you planning to do, or ask Senator Moriwaki, as far as bills that pay back the taxpayers who are paying, who are actually, a lot of them are victims, who are paying for these criminals, their livelihood? And for when they're released, they get all this education of vocational skills, but what are they doing to pay us back for their crime that they committed? Because I think that giving them everything, again, I consider this society and enabling society, enable everybody to just get everything for free when they commit something bad. So, I'm looking at it as more of, how do you make these people responsible for their acts? How do you make them pay us back, the victims of society, for their crimes? I don't feel sorry all the time for everybody. I want them to learn that you're doing something wrong. There's a consequence, not freebies. Bring it to her.
Definitely look into legislation addressing that, but that's a good idea. I will let Senator Moriwaki know and we'll get back to you with the response. Thank you, Joanne.
No more freebies. Work for your, work for what you get.
All right. Thank you so much, Venus, for coming. I appreciate all the updates that you had to share, including the open or the town hall meeting that you guys are having. Is anyone from Representative Garrett's office here? All right. Representative Olds, are you on this call?
I'm here.
Hey, all right. What's up?
Hello, everybody. I'm Ikaika Olds. I tried to do this quickly. So, just to reiterate what Taylor had mentioned, so the Makali Monster Mansion. She already gave you guys the details. I hope to see you folks there. If you do, try to look for a guy wearing a pink leather jacket. Come say what's up if you do, and you see that. So, last week, Thursday, what I don't really share with the Board is I still do periodic homeless street outreach in our community. So, last week, Thursday, because this came up earlier with Roy, I was at Old Stadium Park, and there is something I do want to share. So, two of the people that I had spoke to at the park were originally camped at Diamond Head. It kind of just goes to show that when certain sweeps happen, people tend to move. It doesn't necessarily resolve the problem. It just moves it. They were there for the second sweep, and they haven't gone back. And they're waiting to be pushed again. And there's also three families staying at the park I was able to talk to. So, we're going to try to get them connected with some services. But kind of just mirroring what Roy said, it is dynamic. It's a complicated issue. We definitely have to try to find ways to get more resources. And just to kind of piggyback on with the conversation that was earlier, we used to have a place for adults to be able to store their documents. So, birth certificates, a security card, an ID, things vital for getting housing and for getting to work. It was called Caravan. It was run by Waikiki Health. Unfortunately, they lost their grant about nine years ago now. It was right at the corner of Wailei and just right inside the freeway from where Kapilani turned into Wailei. If, for folks who live around the Halemo'i construction, if you guys got problems, give me a call, call my office, shoot me an email. I have a direct link to Stanford Carr, so he's been actually really good in responding in trying to rectify some of the grievances that have come up. So, let me know. We're trying to start a citizens patrol in that same area. There are some concerned citizens that want to get going. Right now, we're looking for bodies to be able to participate. If you are interested, again, please reach out to me, and we're going to put you on the list. And last but not least, we have jobs available at the Legislature. So, we're hiring for the session staff for 2026, so it'll run from January until the end of April. The link for it is in the chat, and I will take any questions. Joanne?
All right, hold on a sec. Let me just see if there's anyone on the Board here. Anyone here? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Joanne.
No, Betsy San was up first.
It's okay, Joanne. Go ahead.
Okay, well, you, we've talked in length many times, Ikaika. So, I'm hoping that you can give us, you know, the residents who are active in participating with what goes on in this area, what, who opposes some of this legislation that goes, that we are for? Who is against it? Because we don't know everything that goes on there. I don't have the time to be paying attention every day, but if you can forward that to us so we know, because I see some people running for Congress who have in the past not even been courteous to respond to issues about the homelessness. And if those people are not going to respond, I am not going to support them for Congress, whether they're Democrat or Republican. And that would be a nice thing too, if we can have some Republican people come to speak up on their ideas of what they plan to do, and Democrat, not just Democrats, but both. But I would like you to keep in touch with us because between you and the other person, who's supposed to be our representative, I don't get much of a response. So, just to let us know, especially what I brought up to you about all the parking issue, the homelessness, the crime, everything. What can be done to make things better for us, not the criminals, but us, the residents who live in this area? I'm tired of just hearing about, oh, we gotta do this for the homeless. We gotta do that for the homeless. What about us? Who's gonna do something to protect us?
Thirty seconds, Joanne.
Well, that's it. I just want to know who's protecting us.
Yeah, you got it, Joanne.
All right, Betsy?
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm in a place with really bad lighting, so there's no sense in me getting a video. But thank you, Ikaika, and I'm really sorry. I was at the condominium board meeting, so I really missed out. Too bad when Roy Mihara had to stay, but you know, just as an example, we just had a condo board meeting today, and we went over the costs for like a maintenance of our grounds. And the maintenance person was telling us that because the homeless and those at the bus stop were spreading the rubbish, you know, so badly that, you know, the maintenance, they raised their maintenance costs to us by $500 per month. That's a lot. They said that it was costing, it was taking them about six hours more every week to clean up after the homeless or whoever is like, you know, throwing the rubbish around their place. So, you know, I mean, too bad I missed Roy, but this, I wanted to give you guys a concrete financial, you know, expenditure of how much it costs us as residents, you know, to be living by the bus stops where the homeless are. So, I don't know if Roy has gone through this with you, but you know, he himself has observed with his own eyes the number of times during the short, like 20, 30-minute time that he was at 1670 and 1649 Kalakau, the number of homeless who went through all the rubbish bins. So, you know, we asked for assistance on that. And also, I know that about two weeks ago, the stream right by Jack in the Box was clear, I mean, was cleared of vegetation, which is great. That's fantastic. But I also told Roy about, like, there were like two brown tents. Yeah, there were two brown tents. And I know it's ad nauseam. Have you, Ikaika, or is there any way that we can have a discussion on the shopping cart issue? I know I sound like a dog that doesn't let go, but I think it's important. And I'm willing to, to, to show up in person to discuss shopping carts issues. So, your feedback, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Betsy. Thank you for sharing the, you know, the costs to the citizens of what's going on. And you know, not to be dead horse to death and, you know, to, in the appreciation of time. So, one of the constituents actually just reached out today and had mentioned that his car, his neighbor's car were broken into, along with three bicycles were stolen in one hit. I said, believe it was on Saturday evening. And from what it sounds like, he suspects it was somebody from across the street at Old Stadium Park. There are consequences to, to things that happen in our neighborhood. So, what we have to try to do is hit it from two ends. I know Roy likes to use the word attack, but I believe what we have to do is try to address these issues from two ends. One is we do need to create more supportive services so that people actually have a place to go. And one sad thing is when I was on the phone with that constituent today at the Capitol, in the span of five minutes, I actually saw two separate people defecating right in front of my office window. So, I got a free show today. And you know, what it highlights is there have been people reaching out saying that there is human feces on their property. People are pooping right in front of their stores. We have to try to address this stuff. You know, one, we have to take care of these people who are out on the street, but also there are people suffering on the other end, right? So, as for the shopping carts, I have had some conversations, and we can follow up further, Betsy. I can reach out to you later, and we can try to discuss it. And whether or not what like legislation is going to be needed for this, or whether or not businesses can just kind of step up with preventative measures.
All right. Anyone else here? Okay, thank you very much, Representative Olds. Appreciate it. Representative Tam?
Hi, thank you so much for having me. My camera is not working, and it's also pretty dark where I'm at right now. But I put my newsletter in the chat box. Copies of my newsletter should be at the meeting room. My report is really short. Senator Moriwaki and I are hosting a town hall on November 3rd. It was just mentioned by Venus. As she also mentioned, the Department of Transportation, as well as DCCA, will be sending people there. I heard a lot of transportation issues being brought up in this meeting. And I know that that's just brought up a condominium issue, so I think it's very important, if you're very curious about these topics, to come and participate in this town hall and ask your questions because they will know the answers. And finally, if you're living in District 24, a survey is going out to ask about what your top priorities are for the upcoming 2026 legislative session. And with that, I open it up to any questions you may have for me.
All right. Do you have any questions for Representative Tam? All right, Joanne?
I probably wasn't paying attention, but where is the meeting?
The meeting's at Jefferson Elementary School. It is in the newsletter that I posted in the chat.
What time?
Information. It is at, let me put it up, 5:30 PM to 7 o'clock PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming, Rep. Tam. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
All right, I think we are getting ready to wrap up this meeting. I don't know if there's any community concerns. Not. I just have a couple things to remind people of. We have the parade. This is the parade that is on November 29th. I don't know if anyone wants to be at the Honolulu City Lights Parade. This is not the parade that we approved. It's the one that is down from Honolulu-Hale area. If you'd like to be in the parade, come see me immediately after this or send me an email, please. There's a whole schedule and when people need to arrive and so forth. We also need to coordinate the banner, but they need confirmation. They did it today. But if you'd like to be in it, come see me. All right. The next thing is that there's, if you want to give feedback about the dog parks, this was mentioned earlier. It's due by November 21st. So, please give your email. There should be emails about who to reach. It's Nate Sirota. And he's basically wondering if we want more parks in our neighborhood to become dog parks or dog-friendly. And then the third thing I wanted to say is that I got a new job, and it's relevant to this. I will be working for Representative Blatti starting next week. So, I will continue to do this, but if there's times where you guys feel like there's inappropriate conflict of interest, please come talk to me. She does not work in our neighborhood, but obviously, she does live in town and so forth. So, you need to discuss anything, please bring it to me, and we can make sure that there's not ways that feels inappropriate with how I'm doing things. Anyway, thank you, everyone, for coming. I hope you have a happy Halloween. We'll see you all next Thanksgiving week. Bye.